But we're trying to ultimately create housing and have housing. So with that, I'm happy to listen to public comment. Thanks.
And Supervisor Bone, then we'll go to public comment.
And I want to make sure the square footage is whether we're 3,000, 32, 50, 35, or any at all, is just including the dwelling and not ancillary or garages or anything else. The other factor that, and I'm uncomfortable doing this, and I guess, no, I'm having a hard time looking at somebody and says, "It looks like you can afford more, so do more." We have no idea what somebody can afford. We would hope that they have, and we're giving them enough right, to let us know what they can afford. And the reason they're doing this is because they can't afford to go mainstream, and they're in an area where we've allowed this. So as we do this, I mean, I don't know if we're going to ask for W2s, we're going to ask for, you know, "Well, I think you can afford more because you're building a big house." No, maybe I have enough materials saved up that I can build a bigger house. Maybe I've got five kids and I need a bigger house, and I don't have the internet, so I've got to do something with the kid. I'm just saying, I don't know if we can do that part. And as far as us regulating what goes on, you know, what real estate, I don't think that goes, I don't know if we can tell how they close the estate. We can certainly say when it gets to us, what we can desire and things like that. But the other biggest problem we have with when we start putting these things on people's titles is we affect them financially down the line if they want to sell that property, they want to, whatever they want to, it becomes, you know, this is an AOB, so you, conventional financing, or even hard dollars go out. And I know Mike's getting all excited about that one. But what I'm saying is, hopefully before you buy that house, you do the inspection, like I said. And sometimes, we are not, I know we're going to get into litigation, it's not our job to protect everybody how they cross the street. We try to make it safe as possible. But we're putting limitations on people's, a lot of people's most valuable resource. And I'm just guessing at that. I'm not going to have you say, "This is my most valuable resource, here's my W2." But if they want to build more than they can afford, and then they're going to make it work, who are we to decipher that? So I just, and again, we're looking at a program that has not had any problems for 35 years, and now we're going to come in here and protect you. We're the government, trust us. That made everybody shiver. It does me.
Okay. Thank you. We were going to go to public comment. Supervisor Bushnell, you really want to get one in now? One more? Okay.
Well, I just, you know, the responsibility, us taking on the responsibility of what buyers and owners need to do is just awkward. If you're buying a home, you have your own responsibility to ask those questions. And I don't understand why we as supervisors or our county would govern that. You know, I think everybody up here has bought a home. Did you ask? Is it permitted? Is it, and if you're, you know, is it legal? Or, and also, if you're going to do financing, the bank requires that before they'll lend on it.
So the way I'm seeing this, we're going to go to public comment. And then we're, I don't think this is a done deal today. We'll be coming back. I am pretty certain of that. So we'll go to those who are on the phone. And then if you're in the audience and you wish to comment on this specific item, please stand at the side of the room so we can move more quickly through the comments. So go ahead and just stand there, and we'll get to you as soon as we go to those on the phone. Just makes it easier for us. So we have a couple speakers on the phone. Looks like we have 7884. Okay. 7884, press star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes maximum. You don't have to take all the time.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Mike Gordon from Hyattville. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mike.
Okay. Hello. The Alternative Owner Builder Program is more vital now than it ever has been. Our community has a long tradition of thinking outside of the box when developing in one of the most rural parts of California. CCAT at Cal Poly Humboldt is the poster child of many of our strategies and techniques to rural development. The AOB program has given flexibility to owner-builder dwellings and has helped to champion new and innovative ways to reduce our footprint while living holistically off the land. The AOB problem, or the AOB program is not the problem here, but the Safe Homes and Abatement Programs are major problems. These exploitative programs force compliance through extortion and coercion and threaten to unravel the fragile relationship between our government and its citizens. What the county or our county needs is a true amnesty for the generations of unpermitted development in the hills by grandfathering in unpermitted development as the baseline moving forward. If expansion or repurposing of buildings is proposed, then the AOB program must continue to be afforded as a streamlined approach to permit otherwise unpermissible buildings. Forcing our community to tear down perfectly good buildings that have an indefinite useful life is a prime example of the wasteful mentality that is pushing Mother Earth to the breaking point. And increasing the costs and burdens of permitting alternative owner-builder homes could push our neighbors to the breaking point as well. I have known many people who have utilized the AOB program over the years with great results and positive outcomes. But everyone that I have heard from who have engaged the planning department to permit through Safe Homes has been met with substantial costs and threats to tear down their otherwise safe dwellings. Should a developer be able to use the AOB program to permit mega mansions? Probably not. But should the planning and building department have exercised additional oversight when the program is used for a new 20,000 square foot building on sensitive legacy tribal wetlands? Definitely so. But I fear that if we tweak these rules regarding this program as a reaction to recent missteps, we will only increase the cost and decrease the effectiveness of what AOB has always stood for. This program has been an asset to our community for over 38 years, not a liability. Please do not make substantial changes, and please do not intertie AOB with the Temporary Safe Homes Program. John Ford, I do have a few questions for you. How many people have utilized and actually been approved under Safe Homes to date? Through the Safe Homes Program, how many applicants have been told to tear down their homes? And what would be the implications of each of these changes to the cost and feasibility of actually getting people permitted moving forward? Thank you very much for my time to speak today.
All right. Thank you. 3053, I think that's you, Thomas.
Good afternoon, not quite afternoon. Thomas Mulder here. Just want to clarify, you can hear me there, Chair?
Yes.
So as I spoke earlier today, I spoke with passion. Don't really have a lot of notes, just I saw this agenda item come up, and I purposely didn't reach out to any Board of Supervisors or staff. Just wanted to hear what it's about. Part of my gut reaction was when I saw the agenda item, I felt it may be because of one incident of a large home, or it may be because of some supervisors wanting to attack Humboldt. I listened to the report today, and I hear from staff's perspective, what I'm hearing is, it looks like because of an incident, there, we need some more inspections. I'm hearing by a supervisor, maybe two, that maybe want to look a little bit more at rural living. As someone that has purchased a piece of property that had a shack residence, I brought the permit process through under AOB, and it was good. We had multiple inspections, so I didn't know that there was the ability only to have one inspection. I would be supportive of multiple inspections. I could see how you could be supportive of capping it maybe over 5,000 square feet. What if there's a family, a multi-generational family with lots of kids, you know, they need to get 10 people in a household? It's that. Or are we looking at, you know, the family needs to build a village. I mean, there's a small village policy coming up, so who knows what's going on there. It would be interesting if we would hear the same liability concerns when that village policy comes up. Please do take note of that. Please remember, if you're going to change it to every four years, you can get an AOB permit, that, don't forget that policy was changed to two years to support the ADU policy. That's why someone should come in and get a permit for a house, and then eventually build an ADU for another family member. Please do not take our future generations' rights away from being able to build a house. I mean, I have land. I would love for my grandson to be able to build a home here. Do you want to take away that right? I don't know. And as far as the Safe Homes, I'm currently trying to bring a place that I acquired forward under a Safe Homes Act. It, we didn't get wet weather last year, so actually it's got mailed that a wet weather variance was approved, so I'll be able to tell people how that Safe Homes Act comes, or works going forward. Please listen to sound policy decisions. Please don't do knee-jerk reactions. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you. Next, we go to 3403. Press star six to unmute.
Hello, this is Tom Grover. Can you hear me?
Yeah, welcome, Tom.
Hi, this is Tom Grover from Redway. When Dan Toronto passed away, he said to me, "Tom, you're in charge of the United Stand Program." And I went, "What? I can't do that." And I certainly can't replace Dan Toronto, who fought for many of these owner-builder regulations that we're talking about today. In a little bit of history, the people, the Back to Land Movement came in and started building houses and used their own wood, which was ungraded, hence illegal, so they could not get permits. People were told at the time from the planning department that they did not need permits in the rural areas. Nobody cared. And they didn't in those days. Then people put in solar panels, and they were told by the planning department they had to rip them down because they had no code about solar panels. This insanity went on for a long time, and that was the origin of the Class K Housing, which was passed by the state of California. The state of California is governed by the Building Code, the California Unified Building Code. That requires every house to meet all of those regulations. So Governor Brown, back in 1980, I believe it was, passed Class K Housing, which allowed the rural districts to pass their own rules governing particularly small owner-built homes that were alternative in style, building style, and alternative energy use and things like that. That gave the right of Humboldt County to pass its AOB ordinance, which they did sometime later. That original Class K, I believe, and I couldn't check this out, but I believe that was topped out at 2,000 square feet. I think it's wrong that Humboldt County is doing it for larger buildings. I think that was in the original stuff, but don't quote me on that. Okay, so the AOB was passed. Now, there's also a state law that says that if a planning department makes a particular decision, that they are exempt from liability, provided that that was a legal decision. That was a legal decision due to Class K. So people cannot sue on the basis of that. Supervisor Wilson is way out of line on that. That is not the way the law works. Otherwise, the county would be up to their neck in all sorts of legal stuff. Okay, so here we are today, and the AOB was great for people-
Tom, sorry, but it's a strict three minutes. I'm really sorry. Just a reminder to everybody, it's three minutes, and the microphone automatically mutes after that, so I do apologize. 7429, you're next. Press star six to unmute.
Hi, good morning. This is Robi Tenorio. First, I'd like to thank Supervisor Bushnell for her statement about protecting the AOB process. It's that there's agreement that the problems related to the recent AOB building that's motivated this agenda item, problems can be assigned to a lack of oversight by the planning department. And rather than discussing changing the AOB process, I think your time, of our time, would be better spent discussing why one project that's so far out of compliance wasn't acting courage and helped through process to be unimpeded. And it looks like the planning department brought this item to your board, and it feels like a bit of a distraction, that the examination is misplaced. Like, here's a problem not over there with our planning department and our planning commission. So that is my concern. I don't think at this time you should rush out to change the AOB ordinance. I also want to comment that I really appreciate Supervisor Madron's advocacy for waterless toilets and gray water systems, and that would be the direction I would move in, but not, not. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Robi. And next, we have 6655. Just press star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, thanks so much. I just want to second everything all the callers said so far. Completely in support of everything mentioned thus far, and I really appreciate Michelle Bushnell and Rex Bone's comments, in addition, of course, to Steve Madron. He's been such an advocate on this front, and thank you so much, you guys. This is Nicole Norris. I'm also a dear friend and the neighbor of Peter Child, who has the very first owner-built permit in the state. And of course, you know, he helped start the Citizens United Movement. I wish he was on the phone today, but unfortunately, he's not. But I can confidently say that he would not be in support of any changes being made to his and Dan Toronto and Tom Grover, Del McCain. So many of our honored elders here worked so hard in the 80s to make this simple and logical. And I haven't really dug into the new policy. I apologize. I haven't had time to, but I just couldn't miss the chance to put my two cents in here. As a reporter also, after investigating, you know, the county's lack of affordable housing and such, mainly with the Trinidad Commune known as Yee-Haw, I'm convinced that the county's expensive and complex policies are actually the primary reason we lack affordable housing, and we have such extreme health issues. I've tracked people personally who used to have a place to live, but it wasn't up to code, and the county abated them, and then they were homeless. This has happened to a lot of people. You know, people having to move to these beautiful teeny homes that they designed on wheels, like homes that we would all be thrilled to live in, folks that are lower income, you know, really nice places, but they keep getting abated, and then they have to move them around and such. So back to Yee-Haw, they currently house over 30 people up there, and they're looking at having to spend over $100,000 just to do a safe parking program as a community service for our county. He's already been doing that for decades, but he wanted to come into compliance because he was facing $63,000 in penalties for helping house people affordably. And then the compost toilet, like Madron was saying, you know, it's adding tens of thousands on top of these costs for Charles Garth to come into compliance, again, as a community service to provide low-income housing. And so I'm not sure if we should consider overcomplicating something that's founded on-
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, three minutes goes awfully quickly. Thank you. Then we, 7108? Bonnie, I think that's you.
Good afternoon. This is Bonnie Blackberry. I want to support everything that all the previous callers said, and they brought up some really great concerns and whatnot. And I feel like this is a local contractor taking advantage of the AOB and the planning department somehow losing the ball and allowing all sorts of stuff, if you call it mistakes or whatever. Anyway, so I don't want that to bring down everything for all the people that have been complying or would plan to in the future with this AOB. And I feel like, you know, putting the limit on the size, I could see that, and dealing with new permits, where there's a whole bunch of grading. But other than that, I think that stick with this and deal with the problem with somebody abusing the program. Focus on that.
Did she hang up? Did you? Okay. Okay, so the next is 9493. Press star six to unmute. Are they unmuted? You look like you're unmuted. Welcome.
Hello, this is Dylan Matoll. First of all, I'd like to echo pretty much all the feedback that I've heard from the commenters. I appreciate what's been said by Supervisors Bone and Madron and Bushnell, and really resonates with me what Supervisor Bushnell said, which is that, you know, the county needs to do their job, and that's really what we should be talking about. As Robi also mentioned, that's where this review should be, is with the planning department, not with looking at an ordinance. I was born and raised in an unpermitted house. Almost all of the community I grew up with lived in unpermitted houses, and I can tell you that I do not know of a single situation ever where a house has hurt somebody or killed them. So I don't really think this is a big issue. I think that we have an extreme housing problem, as has been mentioned in this county. And personally, I was forced to take down a 30-foot yurt, which was providing housing to a person who lived in it for seven years, and told me that that was the longest time they'd ever had affordable permanent housing while living in Humboldt County. And they had to move out, and the yurt was demolished. And I think that's an absolute shame. And I think that what we should be doing is quite the opposite of what's being talked about. We should make it far easier, less complicated, and more cost-efficient to build new housing in this county. So I think that we've heard a lot of passionate comments from citizens, and that no changes should be made to this program, maybe with the exception of a size restriction and more oversight by the county. Also, as an AOB permit holder for a project, I definitely had more than one inspection. Fire safety was reviewed, and had to be compliant with CAL FIRE turnarounds on the site map and everything else. So I'm not sure, I've never heard of anybody building a project and only having one inspection, so not sure what that's all about. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dylan. We'll go to those in public now here. Thank you for being patient. And please come forward, and you have three minutes, and welcome.
Morning. My name's Tom Becker. Came here in '75. Hitchhiked in a hairy hippie on a trippy-trippy to go back to the land movement. And a lot of people come here for different reasons. And we didn't come here to own all this stuff. We didn't come here to, like, create a dynasty and all these things that people are doing. We come to live simply so others could simply live, live off the grid, and believe in what we did and how we did it. And our integrity was way more than the code. All these houses the speakers are talking about were way stronger. If we needed a 4x6, we'd do an 8x10. You know, I call typical hippie construction, THC, right? I knew I'd get a laugh out of you on that one. Have to bring some humor into this thing. Keep this shit, keep this sanity. It's a plea for sanity, you know? I really appreciate what Rex, Mr. Rex Bone said. I've never been in one of these offices before. I gotta get to work, you know? I'm still building stuff. So I come here, I learn how to build out in the hills. Came into town, I built the Salmon Creek School, Salmon Creek Fire Department, many houses up there, many houses up Island Mountain, Whale Gulch, all over town. You know, I painted all this stuff. I probably painted this courthouse. I don't know. You know what I mean? It's like I said, oh yeah, I did that one. And so it's a call for sanity. It's like, look, don't change anything. Bring in the compost shitter. That's very important. Forget the thing about the septic field. Forget the grading. And even the numbers of the sizes of the houses, so what, you know? That's none of our business. People come with integrity to buy land, live on the land, live off the grid, and create their own homestead. And we've got to honor that. That's like some kind of an American foundation. It's a dream come true when you actually build your own home. And so thank you all for having me. I don't, I'm nervous. I don't really come to these things. And one thing that all these houses did, it created a whole economy. Think of all the money that got spent on every bit of that. Ask Mr. Pearson, ask these people. Steve Daisy, they made fortunes off this stuff. And it's like, we've got to honor it and make it easier, like the one guy on the phone said. Make it easier. I concur with everything Rex said, what Steve said. Mike, I don't know, a lot of that stuff was kind of ambiguous. It doesn't really, it's a moot point, you know? But I dig that you lived in a teepee up Salmon Creek. I did too. So more power to you all. Keep up the good work. It's a beautiful day. I'm going to get to work, okay?
Thank you. Can you come back more often? It was very nice. Welcome.
Hey, guys. My name's John Callahan. I've been a resident here in Humboldt for 13 years. And I just came to comment on behalf of myself and people that are in my similar position, and thinking about the historical aspect of the AOB, but also how we can move forward to protect young landowners and home builders that, especially recently, have been hit by increased home and rent prices. A lot of people in my position have been saving up, looking to buy a home, and then all of a sudden, things just like double. And you're like, well, what do I do now? Okay, I can buy a piece of property, and I can, you know, build something myself and save some money and put my back into that and get a little sweat equity. And I just think it's really important to consider that, because as the community moves forward, that is the community's future. And if we, you know, start to bar that for these exceptions and stuff, we're going to lose sight of what this community is about. You know, I think a lot of people come here because there are these alternatives, whether it be, you know, milling wood that you had your hands on yourself, or whether it's timber framing your home, or these alternative means of, you know, building a place for you to live your life out. And Humboldt offers that. And I would just hope that we keep it in sight to keep that door open. And yeah, there might be some loopholes and some liability issues at hand, but, you know, those need to be addressed in a certain way. But we do also need to keep that window wide open for people to build their homes and their lives here. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, John. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Alan, and I came to this meeting to learn more about the building department. I've had experience with the building department recently since March. I've had code enforcement send me a lot of paperwork to accomplish, to fix up a home. But still, they couldn't find the paperwork to have it, the home was permitted already. And when we went through code enforcement in the building department to ask them to bring up their paperwork for it from the previous years, they couldn't find it. So some things up at the office. I don't think the staff, they're probably working really hard. Everyone's probably working really hard since the past two years. I just think that, well, we have inspectors here, and then I know there's your short staff, then it's really hard to get anything done because everyone has to drive really far. What happens if there's a private inspector? Now, major cities have other inspectors. You could hire an inspector. They work with the county. That could- the county, that could create a new job for somebody. I don't know, that's like, we're here to help create jobs, you know, stimulate the economy. What else is there? One more, yeah, one more minute. I guess too, if you're going to specialize, if we can specialize inspectors to focus on like a certain, like on AOB, alternative builder, owner-builder permits, that would be better because I feel like if you cross-mix one person to do it all, they're going to be like, I can't figure it out, I can't wrap my head around it. I'm working in the city, then I'm working in the country. Maybe you have broken down to have one person to specialize in rural development, then that would change things. And then they would be more serious or they relate more to the people who own and they're trying to build on their land. All right, I think that's about it. That's the most time I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I have a couple of notes here. I think restriction rules would make it harder to follow codes, it'd make increase, it would make more violations. Lots of citizens believe it's too difficult to get permits. Make it easier to make happier citizens would make more housing, lower fees. Don't go against the American dream, everyone's here for the American dream, everyone wants to experience it. I know lots of people getting their property seized with violations for code enforcement because they get overwhelmed, unable to keep up with things. Don't restrict the ingenuity of citizens. A strong citizen is a strong community, government, stimulate the economy, creating jobs here in Humboldt County. Permits should, permits for AOBs should be free because it encourages people to get permits instead of people building without permits at all. And lots of times when you go to the Building Department, you get stuck with obstacles and hoops. And lots of times people have no experience as a builder and they feel overwhelmed. Don't make criminals out of honest, hard-working citizens. As citizens, we give Supervisors, Building Department, Government bodies a lot of power. We as citizens need freedom to live or to have to move away. And lots of people have moved away just because it's very restrictive. You've heard of the people moving away from California just because it's so restrictive and hard to make a living. Lots of times people make the same amount of money in somewhere they've never lived before and have a lot less expenses. Make housing more affordable, we're having a housing crisis. And we're all trying to have a good economy here, get everyone here good jobs and be respectful of everybody. That's about it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. You might want to lift that up a little bit, too. There you go.
Hello, my name is Kevin. I am here today basically out of disappointment that this is even something that is being considered. And apparently it was brought to your attention from the Building Department. To me, it almost seems retaliatory after a class action lawsuit is being filed against the county for excessive code enforcement practices that seem targeted towards people living in the rural hills. I have also dealt with the Building Department as a previous public commenter noted. I would say the records-keeping department needs a lot of work, a lot of paperwork seems to get lost, which then leads to more what seems like retaliatory actions. But on the subject of the owner-builder code, I have read it multiple times. I really don't see where it opens up the county to liabilities, to be honest. Like someone was saying, if you want to do owner-builder, you have to do like the driveway turnarounds, you have to have like your fire water set up. And it's all very specific and designed to release the county from liability on those projects. And I'm sure that people will try to abuse it, which is why it's being brought forward. But I would urge the Planning Department to, you know, I think that's their job. I think the owner-builder code should be left alone as is. It seems like a perfectly fine document to me. And we do have a housing crisis. And as Madrone pointed out, it allows people to be creative with materials. Not everyone can go afford to buy lumber that meets these specific specifications from Daisy or Ace or the lumberyard. Is there anything else? Oh yeah, and I also appreciate Steve Madrone's mention of composting toilets. I think that would solve just a huge problem out in the hills. I see more problems with leach fields causing issues that are fully permitted than I do with a perfectly functioning dry, waterless toilet. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Timothy Deegan. I believe we have a housing crisis, we need less rules, not more rules. I don't think how much money you have or how big a house you are trying to build should change the rules for you. Everyone should have the same rules that apply to everyone. And 10 people doing the wrong thing or two houses doing the wrong thing should not bring us all together to try and change the rules. It should take, you know, at least 100, 200 people doing things wrong before it becomes a serious issue. We have hundreds of thousands of houses in Humboldt County, two to three people shouldn't ruin it for everyone. And that's all, have a safe.
Thank you, Timothy. All right. And Steve, before you talk, just you don't have to use the whole three minutes and it has to stay on this topic of the change, potential change in the AOB code.
Right. So Steve Davis and I'm talking about alternative owner-building ordinances. And I'm also thinking about the opportunity for our libraries and our high school students coming as close to required reading of our unique Humboldt County codes and the California codes for building. I'm hoping that Tom Grover from Redway will write down the history that I think our Cal Poly Humboldt students would be appreciative of. I'm one that is supportive of hemp and cannabis being part of the history of quality building. I'm concerned about the abusive builders, if they're over costs and timing. I'm hopeful that our safe homes program and our urban building codes versus off-the-grid codes will be more defined because there are accidents when there are stiff winds coming along or rains that might blow down a family's dwelling or some of our hopefulness of more and still more legal campsites getting wet if they don't have pallets under their tents. So I'm hoping typical hippie construction will continue with the best wisdom and integrity that your districts will be allowed and will work through the paperwork and the inspectors that young home owners and land investors will find our county as the best place to invest in their future and hope that other neighbors and places where your integrity and our efficiencies to bringing more and still more affordable housing will be inspired along with architects that continue their brilliance and creativity and the history of architecture and creative pursuits of quality living conditions inside and outside. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I was going to say, as we come back to the board, I did want to say, two of us are leaving in like 15 minutes, so I want to give a heads up to the board. Supervisor Madrone, you may be over here shortly. Or as I can tell so far, this is going to be coming back to us at some point in time. So just wanted to let you guys know, don't feel bad if two of us just walk out.
It is coming back to us?
No, I'm saying from what I'm hearing, it sounds like there's been interest in things being brought back to us.
Well, all right, I appreciate, I appreciate you don't get another bite of the apple.
No, sorry about that.
Can I just leave one more note?
You can leave.
You can leave your notes.
Can I say that you guys could write more grants in for people?
Okay. Wait, yeah, okay, we got, you can email it in to us, it'd be great if you have access to that. Thank you.
So, anyway, I appreciate the public commenters, I really appreciate the two that were able to say something that has never been said before. We appreciate what Rex and Steve said. But, and I appreciate the composting toilets because I can remember sitting up here eight and nine years ago, fighting for composting toilets and I was told water quality, all the reasons we couldn't have it. I tried and I tried, you can run with it now, Steve, because I still think they're a great idea. You're exactly right. So with that being said, I would, I'm going to make a motion and take my beating as I should, that we keep the AOB program in place, all housing units of over 3,500 feet be put under a level of scrutiny that is far beyond what it is now and to be followed up. And the reason, and the reason is this, and no one can build an AOB, no one can build an AOB under the new construction in less than four years. Now, there are people out there under the AOB program and safe homes and that are trying to bring structures up to date that are already built. I don't want to encumber those because some of them have multiple structures on larger parcels.
Second.
What? Wait. Can I just say it?
I'm so confused. What just happened?
I want to do an amendment.
Well, let him finish his and we've got a second, I was really excited.
If I get that, everybody jump my ass. So I'm just saying. But, and I like it, so you guys can do that, I like, I want to be relaxed on this because all in all, I think at the end of the day, we're trying to not encumber people and make it as easy as possible to people build safe houses. Anyway, this isn't part of the motion. You've got the motion, what I've said. Now, the reason is, is that covers the fear of the McMansions being out there and putting out, and we stay under, and we don't encumber the people that are in the safe homes, I'm not joining the two together, but we don't encumber the people that are in the safe homes program that are trying to find amnesty and get these to work for them. And somewhere near, if we can throw in that Steve's now in charge of waterless toilets, I'll throw that in there too. But all in all, I think it is a situation, and this is now just why I'm doing this, this is, we're reacting to a situation that hasn't been a situation for 35 years. And so we're making minor tweaks to this. I understand that there are people out there calling Supervisor Wilson. I wish some of them would have called us or at least come to the meeting today or called in to tell us their concerns, and I didn't hear that. I just heard from a lot of people that are concerned that we're changing a program for no apparent reason but one. So that's where I'm at.
Motion second, we have a potential amendment.
Can I speak to the second and clarify the motion?
No, you're done.
You seconded it.
If you heard it correctly.
You seconded something you're not clear about.
That's right.
Just to be mean.
That's right. So I want to clarify, what I think Supervisor Bone is saying is that the AOB, was it you want to have a moratorium on the ones over 3,500 square feet? Can you clarify?
No, I do not want a moratorium. Because there's not enough of them being built to throw a moratorium into it. I think the numbers are.
So what was the, what was the 3,500?
The 3,500 feet will be a different process, three, whatever the Building Department deems to be responsible, so we can put at ease what we're doing. So I think John kind of understands where I'm heading because we discussed it, maybe we go to three inspections, maybe we have a pre-site, we have one in the middle, and we have one at the end. I don't know, but the 30, you were, everybody's so worried about these huge houses that aren't being built, but a few. But the, most of the AOBs are smaller dwellings for outside CSDs.
I retract my second and gleefully hand it over.
Can I, so I would ask the motion maker that we say 3,500 square feet, I'll second with some changes. 3,500 square feet, two inspections, same price, and going with the AOB for we keep the permitting price the same, because that's one of the issues, is the cost. And I don't want to say somebody has money because they're building a 3,500 square feet, maybe they have 10 kids like we were talking about. So I would just say 3,500 square feet, two inspections, which.
3,500 square feet, what?
That above 3,500 square feet, you would have two inspections.
Fine with that.
That you would, but we would still do the AOB cost for the permitting. I know, but I want to be specific because you weren't and you were leaving it to him. So, and currently it's one, correct, Director Ford?
Well, it's a minimum of one, but as was stated today, there could be three or four inspections depending upon the need. And the code does allow that. So just by saying two inspections, I mean, we'll have a minimum of two.
At least.
Yeah.
If I may, I think.
You want the second back now?
No, I don't. But I do think that this list should be applied to anything over 3,500 square feet. It just minimally, because I have to say, a structure of that size has impact. It doesn't matter, I mean, and has potential effect. And I want to point out that we, this does, this did boil over because we've had a few larger home sites that were AOB and had problems. And I'll ask, I'll ask Director Ford, if the two which are, have been the largest, the 10,000 square foot and these 20,000 square foot, if they had actually gone through a regular permitting process as opposed to AOB, do you think we would have had as many of the problems as we would have had in these cases?
Can I ask that, can I ask a question that goes right along with that? If we had done our job to begin with, would we have had these problems?
So on the one, we absolutely did a fantastic job of catching up with that. What they tried to do was do a three-acre conversion, then grade the side of the hill for a house under the three-acre conversion, and then build an AOB on top of that. We did not let that stand. We required them to get an engineered grading permit because of the amount of dirt that they moved, because of the fact that it was on a hillside and there was a tremendous amount of fill being pushed over the side of the hill. That was an AOB permit, but the grading we treated as a violation and so wrapped in a engineered grading permit on that. I'm a little, we're doing a good job of catching up with that one and getting that one under control. The struggle with the one that really has been in the press recently is that it wasn't, the inspections played a role. Had we been able to do a pre-site there, we would have been able to identify that the house was entirely out of place. Had we been able to do a pre-site there, we would have identified that the grading itself was a violation. Had we, and so that really is something that alternative owner-builder doesn't necessarily call for because that isn't a steep site. call for, because that isn't a steep site, but the amount of dirt that was brought in made it a far different site.
So, because it's been in the press so much, Director Ford, it sounds like construction started well, well before permitting process, would this have even, with that knowledge, I mean, obviously, there's large problems with this one structure, and this is why this item is coming, so, so I don't think we can really zone, like hone in on this one structure, there's multitudes of things that happen there.
No, I, you were, I was asked the questions about the two permits, that's all I was responding to. I, I think that one of the things that happens with builders, a lot of times, is that we respond to requests for inspection. So, if somebody goes out, and it's not unusual for somebody building a house, especially under AOB, to not call for inspections, if they're in an isolated location where we're not driving by it all the time, we're not gonna see it, and even if we were to see it, we still need permission to go on the property. So, I, I think that in fairness, I mean, I know a lot of people wanna throw the planning and building department under the bus, and we did make mistakes here, the mistakes we made were in permitting, though, not in the inspections.
Supervisor Wilson?
Thanks.
And then Madron, and then seriously, a few of us are leaving, so if this isn't finished, it's coming back.
For me, I'm gonna ask the motion maker and the secondary, I believe that we should have a setback inspection for all AOB minimally, because, and that is the recommendation of staff, and I think because we don't know, is there a stream, is there an arc site, is there all of the other things that we could have, be having impacts on the community, or on the general welfare of these watersheds, and we're not doing a setback requirement, which I think, I think is kinda minimal, I mean, we're doing it for everything else, and from my perspective, a setback check is, is just the minimal thing that we can do to actually, to actually ensure that we don't run into a lot of these problems, and that is a concern I have.
Would that be tied into that first inspection, where it said? I'm just, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to, and quickly, so these guys can get it, what I'm trying to get to is, the whole idea behind the AOB is not to pay for another inspection. So, if we're gonna put that person out in the hills, and we're gonna send another inspection, we're another six hundred dollars into it, and then we're gonna inspect this, we're gonna inspect that, so maybe they could inspect that setback, then if they, if there's an issue, then we have to address it. I think that there's a set of rules that they get, they have to meet, and obviously, somebody hasn't met it, but we haven't run into the issue, and now we're, now we're throwing watersheds, we're throwing fire, we're throwing earthquake, we're gonna throw everything we can at this, and at the end of the day, what we're trying to get is affordable housing for citizens of Humboldt, because we need it. And, and we can throw, and I mean, liability, fire, everything we can. I'm gonna stick by my motion, if it dies, that's fine, no moratorium, I would like to increase the inspections to two, and they can check the setbacks when they go that. I'm trying to, the AOB is there for a reason. It's twenty percent, fifteen to twenty percent of the housing that we get, and there's a reason for it, and nobody, nobody has called me, and nobody spoke against this, with all the people that have, you've said, have been coming out of the woodwork to say this, nobody stepped up. We did hear from people that are hoping to build something on their house, not necessarily a yurt, at the benefit that you had as a child, or as a young adult, to live in the hills in a yurt, or whatever it was, but to build a structure that they can live in, and I think that's what the AOB's done, four years, so they can't profit, they can't go in and get another AOB for a new construction, because a lot of these are trying to bring the AOB through the safe homes program. What this does, this doesn't complicate, this, this, this tightens it up a little bit, but the AOB program for thirty-five years is not to restrict people, is to bring them into the fold with something to the effect, and I'm not trying to give a pass or anything like that, I'm just saying, we heard from a lot of people that live in the hills, and, and not in the hills, that are hoping to keep, to maintain that lifestyle.
I wanna say, for the record, one, I spent a lot of time in Peter Child's house as a young person, I just wanna say, and Peter and Sherry, and it is, and I have actually spoken to Peter about this issue, so I wanna say that I'm not totally unfamiliar with the situation, I wanna be really clear, and I wanna say that the public comments that we got today were amazing, because we got comments from folks that you, we know, do not comment in public very often, I wanna say, and, and I wanna say it showed, in a bad way, it showed in a good way, it really showed heart and soul, and I wanna, I wanna really, you know, commend some of those folks, because you can tell they're not public speakers. That being said, I do think we need to go a little bit farther to tighten this up, that's just my opinion about this, I, and the way the motion stands right now, I'll vote no, but I do appreciate what AOB is trying to do, and I also appreciate the issues that are coming forth, and I think we're gonna see more of them, and that's where I'm at.
Supervisor Madron?
Well, first of all, I wanted to thank Supervisor Bone for his very respectful, and just, I really appreciate the way we've been working together today, and I wanna thank you for that. I'm looking forward to it, believe me, I find it to be a breath of fresh air, and I applaud you for your effort today, thank you, it's sincerely appreciated. You know, we got a lot of work to do up here, and when we can respect each other's differences, I think we get a lot more done together, so in that spirit, thank you for that. One quick question, then a couple quick comments. Director Ford, when you pay for your AOB permit, there's a fee for it.
Correct.
How many inspections occur doesn't change the cost to that applicant, or does it? If there is more than one?
I don't believe, I don't believe it does.
Right, so I just wanna be clear, that just because there's now two, or maybe three or four inspections, it doesn't mean the cost goes up to that applicant at all, it's just part of the flat fee for the AOB, so thank you for that clarification. I actually think that the motion on the table actually weakens stuff, but it, you know, in the ordinance, which I've read in great detail, it actually provides the ability for the inspector to require the number of inspections that that person, as a professional, believes is needed, given the site-specific situation, and I always used to tell my students this, that the best answer to any question is, it depends. It depends on the site-specific situation. Is there grading going on, is it a steep slope, you said that earlier, you know, what are the considerations? So, just saying, we're gonna have at least two inspections for the big houses, for me, that actually weakens what's already there by discretion. The question is, will the inspectors use their discretion in an overhanded way and get carried away with it, which we've seen at times, or will they use it appropriately? And I'm hoping that all this recent publicity and discussion might actually allow Director Ford to meet with his staff and say, make sure that whatever you're requiring is appropriate for the site-specific conditions that are happening. And so, there's already really strong language in the ordinance that allows for that to happen, rather than saying we're gonna have two for over, over thirty-five-hundred. I still really believe we ought to have a moratorium of using AOB on anything over thirty-five-hundred, I just feel strongly about that. And the last thing I wanted to say is that, you know, sanity is part of sanitation, right? And that's why I speak a lot about waterless toilets, 'cause there's a lot of sanity there in the use of that, and protecting our water supplies and so many other things. I have, in fact, had many complaints from people about the safe home programs, where they had a house, it's got a septic system, but they also have an accessory dwelling unit, and they're being required to put in a septic system for the ADU as well, and it's, you know, it's, I know it's not what we're here today, but I actually think we need to be giving more direction, not today, it's not on the agenda, about how we're implementing the safe home programs, and allowing for AOB approaches in that, et cetera. But, as it sits right now, I don't think the motion actually gets us where we need to be, but out of the interest of time, I'll close my remarks there.
And what I would say, since I'm, we are leaving, I personally am fine with no change today, I feel like we're trying to rush this, and so, I don't know if there's something that can still come back, I mean, it doesn't matter, I'm only one vote, but that's just my, I feel like we're trying to rush something.
I as the motioner, will pull my motion back after listening to Supervisor Madron and realizing everything that is in the AOB program, is that gonna be okay with that?
I would make a motion to continue this item, and to bring it back to us at a date uncertain, to have a larger discussion about both the AOB ordinance and the safe homes program, and think about, what can we do to make them both work better?
Can, so think, can I?
Yeah.
Can, I, I don't wanna continue it, I do want to maybe in the future have another discussion, but maybe the director could inform our board of some of the things we've asked, and, you know, like, I would like more detail, like I said, and then maybe we can, if one of us wants to engage Director Ford, to maybe bring it back, then, based off some of the information we've requested, or at least myself, I would entertain that, but I don't really wanna continue this at this time.
I'm gonna second the motion to continue, 'cause I do think we need to come to some conclusion of this in the near future.
Well, and I'm going, continue means different things, it's like, we continuing it to a time certain to come back, yeah. John, what are you thinking right now?
So, I understood it was a motion to continue to a date uncertain, to have a discussion on AOB and safe homes program, and what I really understand to that is how to make them both more effective. One of the other things that you could do today as an alternative is to, well, that's the motion as I understand it on the table right now.
Thanks.
And I will, to the chair, sorry, I will vote no, because right now, I'd rather prefer a motion when I pull it back, I would have preferred a motion of no change, and then we'll deal with it later, when Armageddon hits.
Well, I will support the motion, because I think it gets to the, kinda the same conclusion, in a different route.
Can I ask one question? Director Ford, we're supposed to begin your reports to this board, according to the ordinance, can we work on that?
Well, that was, I think, one of the things that I was gonna suggest, perhaps, rather than a continuance on this, is that one possible solution would be to vote today to remain status quo with the direction, to bring the reports back as required by the ordinance, to bring a complete update of the questions that have been asked, and also some of the historical information back.
That's what I would like to see.
And then to also agendize a discussion on the safe homes program, and the circumstances associated with that, that's a bigger discussion, because safe homes doesn't, doesn't regulate by itself the waste disposal, that's gonna require DHHHS to be here for that discussion also, but that, that would be another alternative, sorry to confuse it.
All right. I think we're ready, my computer's down, Nikki, so.
Same place.
Yeah.
I think it ends up with the same goal, this motion versus what you said, they're slightly different?
They're slightly different, but I believe it ends up with the same result.
Okay. I think we're ready for Nikki.
Okay, so, to be clear, we are voting to continue, or the motion is to continue this item to a date uncertain. Okay.
Discussion of it. I need, my computer's already down, and so Supervisor.
Okay, I'll do, I apologize. Supervisor Bone?
No.
Supervisor Bushnell? No. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes three to two.
Okay, and at this point, we're going to close session, but I'm turning this over to the vice chair.
Sorry.
Safe travels for both of you.
Thank you.
So, if the county council could read into the record, the reason for the closed session, please.
It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54957.6, in order to review the county's position and instruct its designated labor negotiators.
Thank you very much, and we will be back in, what's our estimate? Uh, thank you, we'll do that, but what's our estimate for coming back?
I'd say probably about a half an hour.
Half an hour, okay, so theoretically, we'd be back about 1:30 or so. That's an estimate, and if there is any public comment on this closed session item, let's take that now. Seeing nobody present stepping up, how about on the phones?
Supervisor Madron, we have caller 3053.
Okay, could you unmute yourself and give us your three-minute or less comment, please? Star six to unmute, thank you. Caller, you are unmuted. Caller, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
There we go, yes, we can.
Somehow my phone, I don't know what was going on there.
No worries.
My apologies, Thomas Mulder here, talking about labor negotiations. It was, I will say, you know, factor in that the decision made just before this agenda item probably is going to be a light item budget of two to ten thousand dollars, by continuing that to, you know, so that may be money that you don't have on the table going into negotiations, just something to think about. And then there was many comments.